All right. Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, July 27th, May 22, and I am calling this meeting in the McComb Township Board of Trustees to order. You will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, like everything in the justice of all.
Clerk Posey, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, trustee Cusmano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Clerk Posey here, supervisor Viviano.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few proposed items. A proposed postpone for item 5D under consent agenda. A proposed postponed item number 10 presentation. And a proposed add-on number, our item number 11, which is a resolution honoring Sophia Vitale. That's all I have.
We'll see, improve the agenda with the changes, additions. For any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido to approve the amended agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item three is approval of the bill, approval of the bills. Is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Support.
Any discussion on the bill run?
Mr. Chairman, I have more of a comment and a statement for the residents. On the bill run, there's an outlay for the Great Lakes Water Authority of $1.15 million. I want the public to know that there's in the works a proposal to bring before this board to pay those bills under protest subject to the determination by a court whether or not the cost of services being properly calculated. I think it was mentioned before, but I want to make clear that because it's not on the agenda today, that it hasn't slipped off the radar and has not been forgotten about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. Any other discussion on the bill run? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Nevers to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is approval of the previous meeting's minutes from July 13th, 2022. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I believe the public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right past it. Um, thank you, Treasurer Gillette. At this time, I will ask for anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment for agenda items. This is agenda items only. Uh, please make your way to the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. If there is anyone participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand and you will be called upon. I don't see anybody present. Anybody on remotely? I know I wish to make public comment at this time, we'll move on. This time to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, remove the consent agenda in its entirety.
Or any discussion on the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, it's agenda items you see now with the.
Correct.
Thank you.
There's no more discussion. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido to approve the consent agenda items. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. As mentioned earlier, item 10 is postponed for a future meeting. Um, which brings us to item number 11, which is a resolution to honor Sophia Vitale. So if those who have not been reading the papers are unaware, um, Sophia, who works at one of our local restaurants, uh, the Coney Island near Hazen Hall Road. When witnessing a customer that was in distress, uh, thought nothing of springing into action and working to perform CPR on this person. So we want to take a moment and recognize that that act. Clerk Posey is going to read us the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Township of McComb, County of McComb, State of Michigan, held in in the Township Hall in said township on the 27th day of July, 2022, at 6:30 PM, the following preamble and resolution were offered. Whereas Sophia Vitale is a 15-year-old resident of McComb County. Whereas Sophia Vitale is an employee at National Coney Island in McComb Township. Whereas on July 7th, 2022, Sophia Vitale responded to a customer having a medical emergency. Sophia Vitale acted quickly to help the customer having a medical emergency. Sophia saw the man in need of help and immediately responded by doing CPR. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Township of McComb, County of McComb, Michigan, speaking on behalf of all McComb Township citizens as follows. That by these presents, the McComb Township Board of Trustees recognizes the courage and professionalism that Sophia Vitale demonstrated in performing CPR. And be it further resolved that the McComb Township Board of Trustees hereby commends and publicly extends its appreciation of community excellence to Sophia Vitale on her amazing act of heroism and extends its best wishes to Sophia Vitale and her future endeavors. Now therefore, the McComb Township Board of Trustees hereby proclaims July 27th, 2022, as Sophia Vitale Day in McComb Township.
So before we vote on the resolution, is there any comment from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Here.
Um, I personally would like to congratulate Sophia. Um, I had the opportunity to coach her in softball, I believe it was six years ago now, which is just amazing to me that it's been six years already. She was a great teammate and a great player back then, and I'm just proud to say that I was part of her life in growing up to be the terrific person she turned out to be. So congratulations and thank you very much for what you've done for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lucido. Anyone else?
I too would, yes, I too would like to congratulate you, Sophia. And 15 years old and springing into action like that. Congratulations. Are you planning a career in medicine of any kind or nursing perhaps or something? Well, thank you for being there and helping that gentleman.
Oh, thank you, trustee Nevers.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would just like to thank you for actually taking action, whatever your career is. You've already demonstrated that you're a person who's not afraid to take the initiative and take action when action is called for. I think a lot of people, sometimes even myself, worry that we wouldn't, we'd be paralyzed not knowing what to do, or that we'd be afraid to do something wrong, or that we would, that it's easier to hope somebody else does something. But the fact that you, uh, you know, sprung into action, you took it upon yourself to be the person to make a difference is, uh, something I hope, I'm sure will carry you through your life and make you very successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Anyone else?
Say one thing.
However.
You'd be the employee I'd love to have. And congratulations and thank you. And I'm sure the the resident or, uh, customer that was ill, they're thankful you also. Good for you and, uh, you go far in life, you really will, by by engaging and being involved. Thank you again, bye.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also congratulate the young woman as well. And Shakespeare said brevity is the soul of what you did was outstanding, well done, and deserves this recognition that that you're being publicly given today. And thank you for your contributions to the community. And and thank you again for springing in action where you didn't hesitate and and think, what what's this going to cost me? You give of yourself and you get back a hundredfold in return. And thank you on behalf of the individual and the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. I'm just going to add to my colleagues' comments, um, only by saying that as the father of daughters, uh, I think I'm, what I'm most grateful is that there are people who are good examples to them. And they, you know, my girls are 11 and eight, and they really look up to girls, you're in your age group. So I appreciate that you're out there doing the right thing, and I implore you to continue to be a good example, because I think the best thing we can do is live by example. Thank you. So what that, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Support. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, motion by Clerk Posey, supported by trustee Lucido to approve the resolution honoring Sophia Vitale. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
And supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. The best thing we get to. All right, moving on to the less fun things. Item 12, we have a request to purchase eight picnic tables. Is there a motion?
Here, I'm moving table, I need to, I need to prove.
Second.
Uh, Mr. DeCarlo is joining us remotely.
Yes, I am, sir. Hopefully, this is the second best thing you do today. I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to purchase eight new picnic tables for Waldenberg Park. We received three quotes. At this time, we recommend purchasing the tables from Tree Top Products for a total cost of $9,744.43. This would include six eight-foot tables, two eight-foot wheelchair accessible tables, and shipping. I've included the quotes, the confirmation of process memo from the finance department. This is a budgeted item, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. And just to add to Mr. DeCarlo, this is a continuation of our $1 million commitment to improving the quality of the parks at Waldenberg and McComb Corners.
That's correct, sir.
Is there any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey. To approve the purchase of eight picnic tables for Waldenberg Park. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. Moving on to item 13, um, would originally have been 13B. Uh, is a request to approve the award for construction of the 2022 sanitary sewer improvement project. The Paymar Enterprises in the amount of $10,532,170.49. Is there a motion?
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Board. Johnson.
Good evening, board. Uh, so this project is roughly four years in the making, started roughly back in 2018. A lot of design and effort went into this, so I can start off by thanking Engineering Department with Jim Van Tiflin and Crystal Kozak, the team at Fishback, as well as the Water and Sewer Department with my predecessor, Jerry Wangland, Ed Koenig, Mike Rickert, and Ron Steinbrink. They're a huge, huge help to get this project where it is today. And anybody else that may have forgotten, thank you as well. Um, so with this, it's going to be a lot of, uh, as you see, almost, uh, two miles of pipe being put in the ground. Complete replacement of pump station number 10. Currently, we'd have to walk down or do an elevator down 40 feet. This will now be submersible pumps, so it'll be added safety for our team, as well as some minor upgrades to pump stations number eight and 11. Um, this is a part of the budget. Um, the, and the, the current CIP has an estimated with these projects to be roughly nine and a half million dollars. There's about a million dollars over. But back in July of 2018, the board did approve a total project cost, our total construction cost of roughly 16 million. So we're under that cost, but the current CIP is a million over. So with that, I'm able to answer any questions.
Thank you, um, Mr. Johnson. Quick question, if I may, Mr. Chair. It is brought up by another board member to me earlier today. Why is it that we're substantially below what the cost was estimated to be back in 2019?
Uh, well, with the award of, so so Paymar, uh, is owned by Dan's Excavating. Dan's Excavating is working on the 23-mile widening project. So there's going to be a lot of work in conjunction with each other. So I guess as the substantial savings will come from them being able to work together to make things, uh, work more seamlessly and working together to make things happen versus having multiple contractors come together.
So maybe not been anticipated that those projects would be concurrent where they could.
It was not, it was not expected, uh, well, there was anticipated potentially, but we did not anticipate or know who was going to be getting the road project at the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Treasurer Gillette.
Mr. Chairman, just as a follow-up to that, the, I understand that it's going to be $10.5 million. What was the second lowest bidder?
The second lowest bidder was, uh, DiAgostini at roughly, I think it was 16 million. And I'm not sure what the, was it about 16 million?
Just, just over.
Just over, okay.
So to pick up on what trustee, I'm sorry, Treasurer Gillette just indicated, there's been a savings of approximately $6 million because of the synergies and economies of scale involved with Paymar being present and on site with a road widening project. And that explains this fairly significant discrepancy between what was projected in 2018 and the $10 million that it's coming in at. Is that correct?
I, I can't guarantee that the 6 million is a complete savings or might be cost savings just because of the working of Paymar's costs, but I'm sure some of it has to do with them working in conjunction with each other, but I can't say it's all 6 million.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. Any other questions or discussion?
Just one.
Go ahead.
So these two companies doing this together or just because they're there, working on 23-mile road, they'll be able to lend equipment, share equipment?
They'll be working together and Dan's will be basically working under Paymar to help with some of the project as well.
Okay. Paymar's getting the job.
Yes.
So in the event that something goes terribly sideways, who, who's going to back this? Paymar in the end? They're, they're putting a bond.
Paymar's bond.
Correct, yeah. All under Paymar, correct.
And then when would you start this?
Uh, they plan on starting, I believe, as after Labor Day. They're trying to get in the stuff rolling, yes.
Thank you.
The total timeframe on the project from start to finish, once they.
Two years.
It's a two-year project?
They're going to get the sanitary sewer done first along 23 before the widening occurs. The stations off, off of the right of way will happen after the fact.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to award the 22 sanitary sewer improvement project to Paymar. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Item 14 is a request to award an easement acquisition services contract. There are motion.
Still move.
Support.
Van Tiflin.
Mr. Chairman, board members, on July 7th, the township received proposals for easement acquisition services. Uh, this is a company that goes out in context, the property owners that we need to acquire easements for, for our main sanitary sewer projects, our sidewalk gap closure program, and and so on. We negotiate with the property owner, bring it to the township for the township board to eventually approve, um, once we've come to an agreement with the landowner. Um, we received four proposals. Uh, committee was set up with myself, uh, Crystal Kozak, Kevin Johnson, and Ben Aloya. We reviewed the proposals. Uh, we chose the top two, uh, scored, um, companies, interviewed them, and are recommending tonight that Land Matters, uh, be awarded the contract. This, this would be a three-year contract, um, with a possibility of a two-year extension at the end if we're satisfied with their services. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any questions? Hearing no discussion. There's a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Nevers, to award the easement acquisition services contract to Land Matters. Vote. Got the name right, didn't I, Jim?
Yes.
Next item, the request to, uh, saw cut concrete pavement outside of the noise ordinance hours. This would be at Misswood Estates Site Condominiums located on south side of 23 Mile Road, west of Fairchild. There are motion?
Still moved.
Report. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the developer of Misswood Estates is requesting that the township allow him to work outside of the normal work hours. This would be into the evening. The work hours are 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM. Um, when you're paving roads, a lot of times, especially this time of year, the weather plays a major factor in how long it takes before the concrete is cured enough that it can be saw cut. Many times that leads into the early evening. It could be eight, nine o'clock at night by the time the concrete is ready. Um, the county won't let them saw cut before then. Um, they're out there to make sure that the roads are quality for the residents that are going to move in and eventually have to pay to maintain them, as we've learned recently. Um, so we reviewed the request. Um, we, it, it's a fairly typical request that we get, and we think it's a reasonable request, so we're recommending approval by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin.
Any questions? Discussion?
Yeah. Generally, the road cools a lot quicker, so have you ever experienced anyone out to two in the morning or anything?
It can go late, yes. It, it, it really is weather dependent. The heat, the humidity, the wind all play a factor. And a lot of times when they're starting to pour in the morning, others is one thing, and then you get in the afternoon and it could be hot, the wind could be blowing. It, it, it's hard to predict. So, um, yeah, the, it, it could go fairly late in into the evening. I, I have, I've seen it go to 11, 12 o'clock. Um, just depends on on what the weather's like.
It's kind of an uncontrollable situation, though.
It is.
It's which.
Right, the alternative would be to let the concrete go and then it would all have to be torn out.
Yeah.
Morning, because the county wouldn't accept it. And the concrete's going to crack. We have to put joints, the, the saw cut joints in it in order to control where the, it cracks. And and you can't, there, there's a certain point where you cannot cut it before.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Oliver.
I'm done.
So thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to, um, allow saw cutting of concrete outside of the noise ordinance hours in the Misswood Estates Site Condominiums. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 16 is a request to approve a law enforcement 2022-2024 contract amendment. This specifically is for a school resource officer that will be assigned by the Sheriff's Department to Lance Cruz, uh, High School North. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Port. This item, uh, was brought to my office, the Lance, Lance Cruz Schools were requesting that we participate in sharing the cost of school resource officer. It is standard practice in most of the high schools to share the cost. Uh, the school district share the cost with the policing agency of a school resource officer. All of the local high schools have them that I know of. And Lance Cruz is asking us to participate, and this is something that we discussed during the budgeting process during the open meeting with the board members. And, um, this is the contract amendment, that's the result of it.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
May.
I, I just want to comment that I learned a little bit through this process that, uh, we're sharing the cost, but also sharing the benefit because the officer responds not just to school situations and emergencies, but on weekends or during the summer, uh, they act as a regular township officer responding to township calls during the, uh, in the summer, during the holidays, you know, that sort of thing. So the shared cost and and also a shared, um, I guess, this protection benefit that goes beyond just the school.
There is, and there's also, um, if I can add to that, uh, there's a real value, uh, to what these officers provide to the students. Um, and from my friends and our staff that have students at Dipoda, that the resource officers there actually really engage with the students, um, and become trusted confidants to many of them. So I think it's a good thing that we help build the rapport with our police at an early age. So, any other examiner question? Hearing none, motion by Clerk Posey, supported by trustee Lucido, and talk tonight, to approve the law enforcement 2022-22-24 contract amendment. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With that, we will move on to public comment. This would be for non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to make public comment can make their way to the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. Remember, you have a three-minute time limit. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ms. Zalinski, and I'm at 49907 St. John Drive, McComb Township. On June 30th, 2022, I sent an email to each of you that requires immediate action by this board. That email included three attachments, the unsealed Haldeman report showing the hackability of our voting machines, whistleblower's sworn affidavit from a former NGO professional showing vulnerabilities and the ability for predetermined outcomes using this current software. And the audit general performance report from the previous election showing flaws and suggestions for remedies. Building upon that email, machines throughout, used throughout Michigan since 2017 and now going into 2022 have not been properly certified or accredited and are in violation of the Help America Vote Act of 2002, otherwise known as the HAVA Act, and also in violation of Michigan law. This includes the contractual agreements between the Michigan Department of State and Dominion Voting, Inc., Election Systems Software LLC, E S and S, and Heart Inter-Civic. The agreement, uh, the agreed upon terms, including state and federal testing certification requirements, are not met by the U.S. Election Assistance Commission before they were approved for implementation to Michigan. The voting system test laboratory and Pro V M V did not adhere to section 3.8, which is the expiration and renewal accreditation process in the EAC Voting System Test Laboratory Program Manual after the certificate of accreditation expired February 24th of 2017. The EAC did not adhere, adhere to chapter four compliance management program to ensure Pro V M V was held accountable to program requirements after their certificate of accreditation expired February 24th of 2017. EAC allowed Pro V M V to continue their role without the renewal of an E S, EAC accreditation, which violates the section 231B of the Help America Vote Act of 2002. The STL and SLI compliance did not adhere to section 3.8 after their certificate of accreditation expired January 10th of 2020. The EAC did not adhere to chapter four compliance management program to ensure SLI compliance was held accountable and met program requirements after their certificate of accreditation expired on January 10, 2020, and allowed SLI to continue their role, which violates section 231B of the Help America Vote Act of 2002. Additionally, additionally, I am sure that you are aware that Michigan law requires the use of electronic voting systems. However, those systems must be approved and certified. Because none of the electric vote, voting system, electronic voting systems used in Michigan were certified, the use of any of these systems are now in violation of MCL 168 dot 37A, A and B. And Melissa's here to close.
Thank you.
Melissa Payless, 5201, Monaco Drive. Continuing where Rita left off, she mentioned MCL 168.37A. It states, "The Secretary of State shall allow a county clerk in consultation with the clerk of each city and town." It states, "The Secretary of State shall allow a county clerk in consultation with the clerk of each city and township located in that county to determine which electronic voting system will be used in the county as long as the electronic voting system selected meets both of the following criteria. A, the electronic voting system is the same type of electronic voting system as the uniform voting systems. B, the electronic voting system is approved and certified as provided in Section 795A." MCL 168.795A states, "Prior to purchase and use in Michigan, vendors seeking approval of an electronic voting system shall do the following. One, an electronic voting system shall not be used in an election unless it is approved by the Board of State, of State canvassers, as meeting the requirements of Sections 794 and 795 and instructions regarding recounts of ballots cast on the electronic voting system that have been issued by the Secretary of State, unless Section 797C has been complied with and unless it meets one of the following conditions. Subsection A states, 'Is certified by an independent testing authority accredited by the National Association of State Election Directors and by the Board of State Canvassers.'" MCL 168.7954 states, "The Board of State Canvassers shall approve an electronic voting system for the use, use in the state only if it meets the condition of subsection one. Perhaps you were unaware of these requirements or the lack of certification of the electronic voting system being used here in McComb Township. Nonetheless, these are very real crimes. It is your responsibility to do your due diligence. You can no longer have a claim of plausible deniability to these crimes that were likely unknowingly committed, excuse me, since 2017. You have not been put on notice should you move forward and hold these 2022 primary or general elections on these same uncertified and unaccredited machines. You are now knowingly and willingly committing these crimes. At this time, I do not believe there's legal remedy other than to urge, force, urge supportive canvassers to recall this, this equipment, and in the interim, to hold elections as they were held prior to the implementation of the electronic voting system. This would be by hand vote and hand cavulation. With an audit proceeding each election to ensure accuracy and as good faith, and, and, and as a good faith effort of transparency and rebuilding trust with the residents of McComb Township in our election. And I have all the supporting documents to give you."
You can leave them right there with our attorney.
Over here?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else present wishes to make public comment? Is there anyone remotely wishing to make public comment?
Not at this time, Bill.
Okay, no more public comment. We're going to move on to board comments. Chris Lucio.
Good for me tonight.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes. First of all, a full disclosure, once I received the text from Ms. Zalinski, I called her, or actually, I sent her a text saying, "This is my cellphone, please call me." I am simpatico with this group. I believe that the 2020 election was stolen. They, I normally wouldn't talk about something like this at board meeting, but this is an opportunity. I saw the movie 2000 Mules. I have it with me, if anybody would like to take it home and look at it. They targeted battleground states, and it only took a little bit of fraud in the right places to do what they did. So thank you for coming and sharing your information and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Trustee Oliver.
Again, well, Sophia left, but thanks to her. And then, Jim, I, I know that, that sewer, we just, you know, we went through it, we got the data and read it, but there was a lot of work that went into that project, and a lot of people involved in this community that really set forth and, and, and kept that thing rolling. And I just want to thank you for that, because that, that's going to be a world needed to get done. So again, thank you.
That's it?
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Kuzma.
To the presenters on this election issue and the reliability of the electronic voting machines, I am not an election denier. I've had conversations in great detail with people I trust whose competency is above and beyond reproach regarding the outcome and certification of the elections. I have been involved in many recounts. These electronic machines have been used for well over a decade. I look forward to reviewing the materials that you've presented. I'll take them very seriously. As a licensed attorney, I'm always cognizant and aware of when people say that this is a crime. But I want to make clear that I'm not sympathetic to degrading and denigrating and undermining the entire election system because one man lost an election.
This entire.
Not appropriate to address him. You've had your chance.
This entire board was elected 100% Republican on the basis of those ballots. And I do look forward, and I will engage this issue because, and I will consider it and give it the consideration that I consider appropriate. But I will not undermine the entire electoral process of our, our constitutional democracy because one man lost an election. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzma.
Treasurer Gillette. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will say that I'm appreciative of the fact that people in our country take the election process very seriously and are, and scrutinize it. And I think that's overall, broadly speaking, a healthy thing, that we, that we do take it seriously, scrutinize it, and that citizens are engaged in that process. So I recognize and appreciate that. I also like to say I've, since I've been here watching our, our clerk work this election, there's no doubt in my mind that she's taking every step available to her to run the cleanest, fairest election that's possible. She's absolutely committed to, you know, to the point of, to, to an extreme point of making sure that she adheres to every possible provision to ensure the election is run efficiently, fairly, professionally. So I appreciate both the residents and our clerk's work on this issue.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Characteristically nice.
Just a reminder to the voters that Election Day is this Tuesday, August 2nd. If you are voting in the polls, please verify your polling location and precinct numbers by visiting mtvoter.org. As mentioned numerous times, and also through your notification of a new voter identification card, your precinct numbers and polling locations may have changed due to redistricting. You can request a ballot by mail until Friday, July 29th, that's this Friday, to receive your ballot still in the mail until 5:00 p.m. You can request that by contacting my office or through the website as well. And just for voters that are unable to get to the office through the week, we are extending our hours on Saturday. We will be open in Town Hall on the second floor from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, August 30th. And for the ladies that presented the information.
July 30th.
Oh, I'm sorry, July 30th. For the ladies that presented the information, I'll make sure our attorney reviews it. It's also a matter for the Secretary of State and the State Board of Canvassers. I take my direction from them, and so I'll make sure the information is disseminated to groups as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. I appreciate everyone's comments regarding what was brought up during public comment. Treasurer Gillette, I echo your comments very much. I do want to congratulate publicly, Mr. Box, won a prestigious award from the State Planning Association. I get the name wrong, I apologize. But that was for our Cultivate McComb Master Plan. Keep kidding words wrong tonight. Which brings me to our parks plan that we just started doing. And Josh, how long is the survey open for?
We're going to continue that through next week.
So we have another week. We had great results, and we did, Josh and his team did such a great job with the Cultivate McComb survey and plan that they put together. I'd love to see them be able to do an equally good job with the new parks five-year plan, and I anticipate winning an award for that one. So please take the time and find the survey on our website and participate and provide the input that Josh and his team need. And lastly, tomorrow night is our last concert of the summer. It's a free event. If you haven't been to one, please take the time, bring your family. Tomorrow night is 50 Amp Fuse, and the event starts at 7:00 p.m., McComb Corners Park. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Slow move. Second.
Discussion. By Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Kuzma to adjourn tonight's meeting. Members, please vote. That motion passes, this meeting is adjourned.